Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 23rd, and this is the regular scheduled board meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 29th, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussions, amendments? All those in favor? That's unanimous for those of us who are here. We have an opportunity for public comment. Would anyone from -- would like to? Okay. We'll move on to reports and discussions. We are lucky enough to have Ms. Chantel Collins and some of her friends come and speak to us. Come on. Come on.
Yep.
Some of the girls from the Environmental Club that you would take and I started. So if you want to come on in and tell them your -- If the microphone actually lets all the people watching hear you, okay?
Hi, I'm Chloe. I'm a freshman here. And so all of you at the Environmental Club, we're here to represent it. And I joined because I love animals and plants and a lot of other hard care. So we also show the younger students. We all make slide shows at my place and stuff to show the university people more about the environment. And at first we got everyone else's recycling, but by the end, everybody was recycling. We started to measure some of the food waste or the waste in the cafeteria, and then we split it up one day. More than half of it was about three days, it was about 15 pounds. And then we started, and that was just for the fourth and fifth grade month period. And then we went and we started, so mostly we had two recycling bins, two garbage bins. And most kids kind of like had a hard time with it at first, but they got used to it once it was kind of farther into the, actually we had had it there for a while. But, and it, we went down from nine to 10 bags of garbage a day in the cafeteria to about two. The last thing we did was the eco challenge, and the Environmental Club met with the environmental board of Rhinebeck and talked about problems and solutions to the town and like pros and cons of things. And found some really interesting facts, like since the Hudson River is our water source, if it gets polluted because of global warming and climate change, we only have enough water source way to last us about three days. And for the eco challenge, we did a lot of sharing things and we made posters and emails. And we put key articles on the posters to make people go around, like, and like join. Everyone read it alone, one's annuals, they were everywhere around town. And there was a lot of impact. We went from like 52 pounds of carbon saved on the first or second week to around 5,235 this week when it's ending tomorrow. So we've all made a big impact, and by getting other people to join, we're hoping we can get all of Rhinebeck to start recycling and being a part of the environment.
Can we ask questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. So there isn't anybody standing guard over the recycling bins now, is that correct?
Yeah.
People are just doing it on their own?
At first, we had helpers from the Environmental Club. We had some parents. And, but eventually, they slowly went away and put it posters. So like we can imagine the first grader who knows what to do, and they've been handling it.
It's still going well even without anybody there to remind people?
Yeah, now rarely, sometimes there's accidentally something that doesn't go there or something, but just take it out after.
Yeah, I have to tell you that the amount of garbage going from nine or 10 to two bags a day is very impressive. You guys did a great job over there.
Thank you.
One more question.
No, no, you finish, you finish.
I was just, I wanted to ask you how our friends at Woodstock Day School are doing?
They're beating us by about 4,000 points.
Oh, that's long.
We're still down.
Oh, I know, you guys are doing fantastic.
Pretty remarkable.
Yeah, I'd say.
Is this the first year for the club?
I think so.
Well, you've done some great things in your first year, and I also want to say it's not easy to come here and give a presentation to the board. You did a fantastic job. Thank you for coming and telling us all the great things you're doing.
So I have a quick question. Will you guys come teach the high schoolers and the middle schoolers how to recycle properly?
Yes.
Well, thank you guys so much. You really have done so much important stuff. We had a visitor from the high school the other day, and they showed.
Okay.
That's very cool. That's really cool.
Teach those good kids a thing or two.
Right.
It's great.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from Mr. Jensen about our technology pool.
I appreciate you giving me the time to give you a brief update on the Merberath with technology integration in the district. And I think this is my second report in front of the board, but also I think there's a correspondent, Joe, in a week, in a Friday packet or an update as well. First time I moved back in November, I began to kind of lay out a plan of what we were going to do this year, what our focus was going to be. Primarily, we implemented five new cards, computer cards and laptop, mobile technology at the high school. And we were going to follow the track with the impact that would have upon the instruction, particularly at the math building. And then also, we spent fall looking at gaps that we have in our curriculum, meeting with, you know, teachers and looking for areas where we can improve. And we wanted to dedicate the superintendents conference day to that effort. On the superintendent conference day, we had 54 sessions, 54 instructional sessions. 22 of them were unique, meaning that they were being, you know, the 54, meaning that, you know, you might be offering them multiple times, but we had 22 unique sessions. Of those 22 sessions, 16 of them were offered by our staff. And I think that's an important thing to note, is that most of the impetus, most of the professional development that was being presented that day was presented by our own staff. And I think that speaks highly of our staff and particularly their interest and their ownership of technology, and I'll speak to that a little bit later. But we also, at that November meeting, we also, we began to see this trend occurring, particularly when we looked at the curriculum projects that were submitted last summer. There are about 60 projects that were submitted last summer and approved. Of those, about 20 of those were technology related. So one-third of the entire curriculum effort that we put forth last summer was technology related. Again, the staff was beginning to take ownership of it. And one of the things, and I'm going to digress here a little bit, but one of the things that Joe had mentioned when I first came here was the importance of the staff having confidence in the technology. And that was a big, a big issue for him. And he made that very clear to me, that people need to be able to depend upon it, that it would be stable. And we've made a lot of strides and made a lot of efforts in that timeframe between when I first arrived here and now to make that happen. We replaced the entire switches and networking that we already had, plus we added on top of that a second layer, which was the Wi-Fi system. And so that has allowed us to basically expand out into mobile technology. So it was real important, and I think he was right in his inclination, because the staff has really responded well to that. And so then I also presented at the curriculum meeting, and I wanted some clarification on how to measure, how to measure integration, what was success, how to know what it is. Because I could throw out facts all day long, saying, well, we've done three things to this, we've done three things over here, we've done five things there. But is it really integrating technology? And yeah, it's all bits that. But I think that there's a combination of what you see, what you're observing all the time, and some of these factual things. For instance, some of the factual things is the usage of the carts. That's a stat that I could provide for you. The usage of the carts is becoming more and more aggressive. Teachers are using it more and more aggressively, and people are beginning to use the carts and actually work and negotiate with each other. I need a third period, can I borrow it? Can you use it sixth period? And those kinds of things are happening. And as I look at the reservation system, which is being used in all three buildings, I'm seeing instead of blanks, I'm seeing them filled with teachers' names, and it's really encouraging for me to see that happening as we go along. So there are facts like that that can be presented. Now I'll go fast forward to February, where we had our superintendents conference day. And out of, and as I mentioned, six, four of those sessions were presented by our staff. At CLS, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read all the whole list of things, but for instance, grade one iPad integration, that was where the first grade got together, and how are we going to better utilize the iPads, the technology we have at our grade level? And they spent the entire day doing that, basically spending the entire day on technology integration. Other ones chose certain topics. Grade three had X robots, grade five had website integration. These were all things that they wanted to do, that they felt this was time-well spent. And when we responded, gotten back, they enjoyed the time, they appreciated the time that they had, being able to just spend time doing what they thought was most important in their classroom. And so I think that's, again, it's week 12 of what we've been doing here. We did make everybody take, and this is not the topic of technology integration, but it's important, and that is the topic of cybersecurity. We made every staff member that day go through a one and a half hour session on cybersecurity and how to be aware, how to raise awareness. About 80% of all cybersecurity breaches is due to human error. And, you know, you can put all the technological barriers that you can and have all the defenses that you want, as much as you can afford, but again, most of the breaches are somebody who calls for a scam. I myself have been a victim of that. 15 years ago, my entity was stolen, and it took years for me to rebuild that, you know, protect myself. And so mistakes that are made, you know, and so to be aware of that and not to fall for those things is very important. And we had a person from, somebody who works with, is all elementary schools code speak to the staff on that, and it was a very candid conversation, and it made for people to think, and I think we've done well. Like, you know, we're always going to have challenges, somebody's always going to, somebody's going to always make a mistake, but we, you know, we know what to do, we know how to respond to those things. And so it's very important that people feel confident, and that's one of the things that I think is important, is that I will get emails saying, hey, what do you think of this? I got this, and it's suspicious. And 9 times out of 10, yeah, it is, and we say, just delete it, ignore it, and move on. But the fact that we raised that awareness, you know, it gives teachers, it gives staff, it gives people confidence that they know how to navigate it, and they're not intimidated as much by technology as they might have been in the past. Some of the things that we did at the secondary level, we did Acrobat Pro and InDesign Basics and Photoshop Basics, again, Canvas, which we talked about before, VLA Chromebook Integration at the high school, visit monitor training, all of the, Advanced Excel, all of these are, of course, were sessions that were offered to, again, do a deeper dive into the various topics that they have in the various disciplines. One of the things that I, and I think I mentioned this in the written report that Joe shared with me, was I was changing next year and probably lengthening out the sessions, because one of the things that they, one of the things that came back from the feedback from the staff was, I want to spend more time on this topic. If I could spend more time in, let's say, Photoshop or something like that, I wanted to be able to spend not just one and a half hours, I wanted to do a three-hour session in that. So, and that tells me something. It's not just, oh, I just want to have, you know, show me the newest shiny thing that's out there. It's, I know that I want to do this, and I want to go deeper into that. And that is really what technology integration is all about, is going deeper with it, and having, having an understanding of when it's appropriate to use it and when it's not appropriate to use it. And I think what we're seeing is throughout, what I'm seeing is a trend, that there's a maturing that's happening among the staff, and there's more of a confidence. Confidence not only in themselves, but confidence that the system is not going to fail them, and they're not going to have plenty of students there, and everything crashes and burns, and I'm not going to try this anymore. People are willing to step out, the staff is willing to take chances, willing to stretch themselves in many ways. And quite frankly, and I'll just refer back to that stat that I mentioned earlier, when you have 16 sessions being offered by your own staff, I'm not aware of any school district that does this, that actually uses their own staff to train to such an extent that we are doing it. I mean, you find drabs of it here and there, but I'm not aware of a model that we have adopted here, quite frankly, that we're the majority of our own in services being done by our own staff, doing turnkey training to our own people. And when actually now, what they're doing, instead of introducing a new technology, it's, we understand this technology, we know its capabilities, now let's apply it to the curriculum, let's apply it to our instruction, let's apply it to, let's make, let's work with a certain degree of efficacy with how we use this technology and the investment that we've made. And being able to do that, I think, is really important. That's another step up. That's not just using it to use it. You're using it now in a more systematic way that it actually hands up instructions, and they're beginning to understand it's not just a shiny new thing, it is a tool, just like any other tool, research and communications. So I was, I got a little entertained when the Environmental Club talked about emailing people about the environmental, you know, initiative that they wanted to use. That fifth grader is using an email system within Rhinebeck Central School District. We've allowed emails to be done with the fifth grader just within our domain. It can't go external to the six through 12 students to do that. Fifth grade students can, and they're using it. And they're using it for an initiative such as the environmental initiative that they want to do. So that's where we're at with some of these things. Want to, I don't know if there are any questions right now, if you have any questions, I can certainly answer any. I mean, this is where we're at as of this point. What I will tell you is that I, Marvin and I have been talking quite a bit about curriculum integration, and there's, there are two organizations in this country that really are the leaders in technology and in education, and that's ISTI and COSIN. And ISTI has a conference that they move around the country every year. This year happens to be in Philadelphia. COSIN's focus is more on survey and watching trends. I think Horizon's report I shared with you, that's coming from that group. They did a report, and they talked about, and there are three areas, and I won't get into all of the areas, but I know we're under some time constraints here, but there are three areas. They looked at hurdles of what, you know, what there would be in technology integration. These are the hurdles, and they listed the top five. One of the top accelerators, you know, and one of the top accelerators happens to be the human capacity. And I've been talking about that throughout this whole presentation. It's about being able to, how best to describe this? Instead of being top-down, and somebody from administration or somebody saying, this is, you, thou shalt do this or that, it's more, you know your area, you're the expert in math or science or whatever happens to be, what, how do you, and you actually create an environment by which the staff themselves grow. And building that human capacity is where you're going to find true tech integration. I could mandate it from on high if you wanted to, but really, it doesn't work that way. I've seen it, I've seen that attempted, I've seen that fail. What really needs to come from grassroots, it really needs to come from the teachers themselves. And sometimes that's messy, sometimes it seems inconsistent, but it's really the best way to do things, in my experience. And then some of the other things is how to create an environment. And the third area was what environment best produces the, what you're trying to achieve in the area of technology integration? One of those was mobile technology, which we are, we have now embraced, another one was cloud computing. So I'll share all this out in a technology integration report with you, but I just wanted to give you a flavor that there are, there are people doing research in this area, and technology integration is a complicated topic because of how people view it. And, but there are times going up, but I'm seeing common threads as I do the research, that these are some of the things that happen in technology integration. And trust, again, we go back to what Joe had talked about before, people trust the system, they're going to, they're going to take the risk, they're going to take the chance, they're going to do it. And I think we see that a lot in our system. Some of the things that are anecdotal that I see is, we have carts distributed throughout the secondary building, and there are 30 in a cart, but many classes don't have 30. So if Mr. Jones happens to have 30 computers in a cart in his room, and he's using them with his class, well, there might be seven, eight, 10 extra laptops that are sitting there not doing anything. Students from another class will come in, can I borrow a cart, you know, number 29 or, you know, number 28, and they're borrowing. And it's become a little, we're still trying to get a handle on it, but it's a good problem to have, because what it's telling us is that students want to use this technology. They're using it outside, in their study halls, in the classroom, in the hallways. I've seen students actually lined up and acting in the fifth grade. I saw them all sitting on the floor outside, working away on the computers, you know. But this borrowing system, it means that we really have a need, that we have a desire by the students and staff to use that technology, and it's very important. One of the other hurdles that speaks out of that COSIN report is also digital equity. We really worked hard here to make that happen. We tried to distribute technology evenly across the grades and across the departments and various grade levels. What we don't have a great handle on, and we're working on it, is what technology that students have at home. And as more and more as we flip classrooms or we do blended learning environments, and we say, yeah, you know, Johnny, we'd like you to go home, and we'd like you to write a three-page report, and yeah, do you have a computer at home? The answer might be yes. What we don't know is behind that is Johnny's got five other siblings, and they all have three-page reports, all due the same day tomorrow before, you know, before school starts. And so those are the kinds of things that we, we know that we have, we know that our students have technology at home for the most part. Some don't, and we try to address that in ways that we can. Obviously, one of the things that we don't have control over in that particular area is connectivity to the internet. That's just something that we go, we live in rural Dutchess County, it comes with the territory. And so we try to, you know, try to come up with ways to compensate for that. But digital equity is an issue, I think it's going to be a growing one that we have, it's one of our challenges going forward, is making sure that students can have access. You know, do we have a longer program? Maybe that's something we look into with all of our older technology, you know, those, that would be policies and things that we'd have to look at. So there's some hurdles, there's some challenges that yet ahead. I'd like to meet with the curriculum committee adjourned, I think it's a meeting, I wanted to invite myself to it anyways, to give you an update on that and give you a more formal skeletal framework of what the integration plan would look like, and some of the challenges that we have before us.
Consider well.
But, but there are challenges, and we need to, we need to address those, and I think we're on the cap. I think, you know, the brightest light I've seen, and I've mentioned it several times here already, is the capacity and the expertise and maturity of the staff accepting and utilizing technology. I think that really speaks highly of the staff that we have here right now. So, you know, it's a broad topic, and there are lots of, you know, rabbit trails to go down, but if you have any questions, I would certainly answer them here or if you have any questions.
Thanks for presenting, this has been very helpful. Do you see as usage, especially in the secondary school, starts to increase, as carts being the, you know, deployed solution going forward, or do you see like a one-to-one device?
I see probably in the future, one-to-one scenario at the secondary level. I don't know if I would see it in the lower grades, but at the high school, I would see that. And that's usually, and that's a very traditional model. I mean, most, many school districts will usually start at their secondary level and do a one-to-one. I know that we have, a lot of students prefer, one of the trends that I have, I was doing some research on this, was the bring your own device, because students are comfortable with their own technology, they just are, all the programs are there, and a lot of the stuff that we've done, especially in cloud-based computing, the students at the secondary level all have them on the 365 account, so they have, they can download Word, PowerPoint, Excel, and use, they're all there for them to use, you know, their own devices. And so, so I think that there's, the initial response is yes, you know, a one-to-one, but I think one of the things we'll have to consider is the bring your own device, and people having that active.
Are you finding with the reservation system that there are, that sometimes people just can't have the carts? And is that happening, are you able to track that?
Yeah, what we had last year, we had a situation last year where we actually used a cart to support a class, and we found that to be very detrimental, because what happened was if Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith had the cart first period, anybody who had a first period class wouldn't sign out, or wouldn't sign out a cart, because they couldn't have access to it for their first period class, because it was already pre-signed. This year, we're seeing, well, actually what we saw was, now that we don't have that, any particular cart assigned to a class, the usage is going up, because now it's open. And, and I have not found anybody coming to me and saying, I have received an email or correspondence from any staff member saying that they had a problem, and I can't get a cart, I don't have access to technology, I haven't had that. It may be happening, but I'm not aware of it.
No questions?
I, oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, are there areas relative to the self-audit where you still feel like we, as a district, have more to do to meet the goals of audit?
Yeah, it's been a while since I've looked at that. I remember there were like 74 items in that thing, and we had addressed like 60-some-on of them, you know, whatever. There were one or two of them in there with technology integration. I think one of the things that we need to work on, and I think working on it, is consistency across the grades, you know, that all, all second grade teachers are using technology. One of the things that's nice about technology is it does hold together consistency. It does, if you're using, if you have a project going on in third grade that allows you to, that you need to use, let's say, Power Phone as an example, then everybody has to learn that, that technology in order to complete the assignments, and all the teachers have agreed that this is how we're going to do it. So in a sense, it does draw and tighten the curriculum to do that. I think I mentioned that at a curriculum meeting or a talk session, I had a few of these. So I think that that helps pull and tighten that curriculum together, helps the teachers become more consistent across the board. That's one of the things that we're looking at with some of the technology integration at CLS. We have attempts, particularly, we have a lot of work going on, particularly in the fourth and fifth grade, upper grades, in trying to work that consistency out, trying to make that so that when they hit middle school, that there's a more even skill set that we have when they hit middle.
But is this consistency amongst the students or consistency amongst the teachers?
Teachers, we're trying to tighten that up. One of the things that, and I think I mentioned this as a curriculum committee, is there's sometimes at CLS, we have enrichment programs. And so what happens many times is, students who attend those enrichment programs then come to the sixth grade and appear to have a higher level of skill, and they do, because they've done these enrichment programs, whereas the other students who haven't availed themselves to that don't have that skill set. So then it looks like it's inconsistent, but it's not inconsistent in the curriculum, it's just an enhancement program that some of the students have been given. And I'm not saying that happens in all cases, you know, but in some cases, that has been true.
So I'm wondering about consistency with things like, you know, updating webpages, stuff like that. That's something that we've gotten complaints about, like certain staff members will update it, their homework will be there, some will not, or different ways they use that, and do you find that's starting to improve as well, or?
Well, I know that the fifth grade did webpage integration, the fifth grade worked on that. I don't know if that's, I don't, I've not heard directly those complaints, and if you have, pass them on to me, then I can address them on an individual basis. But I really, I haven't heard that directly, but it'd be nice to know that, then I can go and encourage that. And it may be a technical issue. I don't know how to do apps to resolve that, do care of that.
And what is your feeling of percentage of staff? And what is your feeling of percentage of staff in the secondary that's using Canvas?
Canvas?
Because that would be an alternate to the webpage, right?
Right, right. I could actually provide you, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know if I can give you a percentage, but I would, I would say it's under thirty percent, you know, at the high school level. It's much different than at the middle school level. But the, but I could easily pull up and see if you have active accounts versus the number and pull that stat. It's easy enough to do.
I just wanted to ask a question. I've been keeping the board as updated as I'm able to regarding the dark fiber link between this building and Chancellor. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts as to how, when we get, when we get that dark fiber connected and running, how that might support and enhance technology integration over at Chancellor?
Yeah, what they should see at Chancellor when this is done is a much faster internet speed. Right now, it's bottlenecked, and I think I've used that illustration before, the bottleneck between the two buildings is a hundred meg. Some houses have more than a hundred meg. I have more at my house than the entire CLS public has. You know, this, and that costs us almost eleven or twelve thousand dollars a year to have that. To get the dark fiber in, the cost goes down to about two thousand dollars a year, including the maintenance, or three thousand dollars a year, including the maintenance on it. And that's been a long path that we've had, and I think you shared it before. We've gone aerial, we've gone underground, we're back to aerial again with the company, and I have a phone conversation with that company tomorrow, working at ten-thirty to get a timeline of how soon that project will be completed. But one of the things that I think it's been particularly effective at CLS is the new math program, because much of that is heavily internet-based and requires speed. And what they're, what they're seeing right now, with some of the, some of the teachers are looking at it, just not presenting it to students yet, but just looking at some of the advanced lessons, they're seeing buffering. And so, you know, they don't want that, because that's just discouraging kids and discouraging to the whole instructional process. So we're hoping that that, that the dark fiber will eliminate that, and we're hoping for us to temper rollout of that, in case I'm shooting for a question.
This may be a strange question, but for those people who don't have good connectivity at home, do you see it being an option or potentially would, I mean, not maybe an official option, but could people come after school to just be in the parking lot or near the building and get Wi-Fi access?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at that. There are actually school districts in the Adirondacks do that. They actually have Wi-Fi signal broadcasting out into their parking lot, and in the evening, you can come up with their cars, and they actually do that.
Yeah, we would totally take advantage of that. I'm serious.
Oh, yeah, because it's bad. It's not an ideal situation in this area, and hopefully that will improve. I'm hoping that if you take the 5G and, you know, some of these other technologies come in, it'll improve, but right now, I don't see that in the short term. But yeah, that's been something that's been looked at, as far as other school districts doing that. It really doesn't cost the district anything, except to turn up an AP to broadcast out into this particular area to do that.
And not that it relates directly, doesn't relate directly, I don't think, to technology integration, but after our last board meeting, Steve and I met with Gary, the village mayor, originally just to give him the courtesy of letting him know, you know what, we're not gonna be tunneling through anybody's lawns and, you know, thank you for working on getting us easements, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna need the easements. And we explained to him why, and I wanted him to hear it from us before he heard it from our friend Bill Kemble or somebody else. But we did talk a bit about the possibilities that the village might give some consideration to, just in terms of kind of expanding things in the village. The company that is, that we're going to be working with to run the dark fiber from here to Chancellor is a company out of Westchester, who we believe is looking to break into the Dutchess County market, which is why we feel they've given us a very competitive price on this project. They're also, whereas before, we were looking to, to take the quickest route from point A to point B, they're gonna run that fiber down to parsonage and then up the driveway. So they're taking the long way around, and I don't think they're doing that to save money. If anything, that's costing them more to run more fiber, but it's also getting them closer to the village center by coming down that far. And we mentioned that to Gary and gave him some contact information in the event that he might want to make a contact with them. While they're doing that work here, there may be some ways that the village could potentially access some of the technology. We also made a decision, I guess the maximum number of strands in that dark fiber is twenty-four, is that right?
Yeah, that's.
And I think originally, we were talking about, you know, as a school district, twenty-four is like way more than we're likely to use in a while. And then we were talking about it, and we're saying, you know what, for the, for the extra cost, it probably makes sense for us to get all twenty-four strands. And we mentioned that to the village mayor and said, you know, we, we're gonna have more than we can use right now, so if you have any thoughts about how you might want to make use of that? And we talked a little bit about security and having the police access camera, camera signals remotely through, you know, through that fiber, whereas now, they'd have the VPN into our system. We just wanted to open up some possibilities to the village and have them think about how that might, in some ways, improve connectivity beyond the school district. So just wanted to let you know, we didn't assign any contracts or anything, but we wanted to let them know that we're certainly more than willing to work with them if there are any ways we might be able to enhance their access to technology. So I just wanted to make all of you aware of that.
I'm always in favor of sharing whenever we can, but I don't wanna share so much that we can't grow into what we're paying for. So, you know, if there's a rental fee, it might be something you should consider too.
Anything else, Steve?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
All right, principals, you're up.
So some things happening at Chancellor, as you may or may not know, I think many of us are as proud of the STEM labs and the three buildings as I am. And I know Chancellor was, you know, we realized they had K-5 modules for Project Leadway, the feed into the middle school and high school curriculum, we really took the chance of revamping our lab and hiring Dave Wolfen, and it's just been something that's very successful. And I'd just like to share some of the, when I have the opportunity to share some of the successes of that, I want to let you know, right before break, we had Redhook Elementary Principals, Brian and Aaron, who came to visit our STEM lab. Paul Finch actually reached out to me directly, and Dave Wolfen was kind enough to offer a space. But the reason I mention is because they joined two other districts. We've had three districts come and visit that STEM lab, and I think it's because the model is different. It was Paulian and Dope also, so. Three different school districts over the last couple of years. And one of the reasons I mention is because when we started this, I just wanted to give a little recap. Marvin Krepp, myself, Steve, a couple of us had joined, had gone to Saratoga, I believe, to take a look at how they set up their STEM labs there. And Project Leadway was represented there, they had representatives there. And we had found out back then, and it's still the same, that the setup that we had designed in this district and wanted to implement in the elementary school didn't, literally didn't exist in New York State as far as the layout, meaning having someone like David in his position, being the STEM teacher, co-teaching with teachers, and him having a fixed space. A lot of times, there's someone like him who's trained in, actually, every time, someone who's trained in the building as the lead STEM teacher, and then you have classroom teachers adopt it. In back then, maybe a little different now, but back then, many school districts were doing, if I had four classes in fourth grade, one teacher would adopt Project Leadway, work with that lead teacher, and go from there. So you kind of had really one person that was kind of trained, like David is, but then they were kind of turnkeying and weren't really teaching it, actually. They were more kind of supervising teachers teaching it. So I just wanted to mention that it's kind of nice, you know, they reached out to us, and for the third year in a row, we've had a district come and really take a look at our program, which I kind of look at as a bit of a flagship, the way we designed it in this area. So very proud of them, I just wanted to share that with you. I know, as you may or may not know, I think the reason for their visit was because Assembly McKay was kind of working towards trying to fund elementary STEM labs, and we really were way ahead of the game in working on that. So thank you all, myself and my staff and David. Because I think, you know, I have to be honest, you know, David and my staff, the buy-in was from day one, a hundred percent, and it's very rare that you see that, that somebody just hit the ground running and is so successful. So, another successful step. Last time I was here, I had mentioned Armando School's work with the CLS staff, with Audrey Wood. So in February and March, just quickly remind you, we basically had a kind of a writer's workshop one-on-one, we're really focusing on writing and the quality of writing at Chancellor, this year to next year and beyond. So this was kind of a first step, which is kind of looking at that within the balance that we're seeing issued with that and the approach. So every grade K-5 spent a half-day getting kind of a writer's workshop one-on-one with Audrey, and then kind of came back a second time and did a half-day, sort of talking about more application for their grade and that type of thing. And I'm just pleased to report that as a result of those two visits, we're glad to say that there are several grades at Chancellor that are actually continuing that work with Audrey this year to kind of just pick up where they left off around writing. And some highlights include kindergarten, working on perfecting their mini lessons, doing demos in two classes, and then they're gonna come back and debrief. So that's another thing, I've always tried to really support my staff in feeling comfortable, you know, performing the task of a teacher and a lesson, and mini lessons, and guided groups and things like that in front of one another, and having an opportunity to brief afterwards. And believe it or not, that's probably one of the hardest things to do. It's actually harder, I think, for my staff to do it in front of their peers than in front of Ferna, because they're just doing it every day, you know, it's a very different dynamic. So it's great, we're starting to move towards that. Grade one, working out, working on mapping out their approach to implementing Lucy Conkins units of study, which is kind of supplementing what we're working on around narrative, opinion, and informational-type writing. So they're gonna work on that. Grade one is gonna start kind of adopting that structure as they move over, and we have a kind of, working with Marvin, and I wanna plan to just up our writing within the context of our existing curriculum. Grade two, they're executing a mini lesson that they planned together, and then spending some time collaboratively autopsying that lesson, so things are kind of coming together. So they're gonna have a chance to kind of play, do it separately, but then they can spend time with Audrey, kind of debriefing and having her kind of lead that conversation. Another highlight, grade five, planned memoir writing unit around Lucy Conkins' kind of style of the teaching writing, and they're gonna, they're working on implementing that in May, and I should work with them to do that as well. So some interesting, kind of that initial kind of toe in the water of the writer's workshop and upping our writing has really turned into something people are looking forward with, and using her as a great resource. As you mentioned, those, the ladies stole my thunder, but the recycling initiative at Chancellor, I had some statistics that they shared with you, which I thought was really quite impressive. Joe, it's interesting, I'm glad you asked about the support, because for a couple of weeks, not only students, but Julie, Chantel, they kind of came down on their own time to kind of help out. The aides, the lunch recess aides really picked up that issue too, so they were kind of helping grade one a little bit. I think some of the statistics that I was gonna share with you, that they shared with you was really outstanding. And the one thing I wanted to mention was, that's really what that, that early enrichment program is about, like empowering students, showing them that they can have an impact. That was the ultimate goal of that proposal, and I think them really getting a clear understanding, you heard it there, that the micro can influence the macro, and even, even when the macro is just our village and that kind of thing, it's pretty cool for those kids to see that. So I appreciate you being an audience, and it's just been such a great program, and we continue it. I wanted to mention our Arbor Day celebration on the 26th, this Friday, and saplings are gonna be delivered to fourth-grade students, and I just wanted to take another moment to thank the RSE and the Rotary for kind of coming together and collaboratively supporting that. March 28th, our specialist team began to wrap up the month-long Harry Potter character ed unit, and they did it with Hudson, a visit from the Hudson Highland Nature Center to do a Harry Potter-themed presentation, annual presentation for three-five, so it was about tarantulas, toads, snakes, screech owls, things like that. So it was just kind of, third, fourth, and fifth on that day kind of all went to the gym, and they kind of experienced that together. A great way to start backing up that character ed unit. Our annual on April 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, at the same time, some of our students in three, four, five were sitting for our ELA assessment. Grade one had their annual first-grade dance residency with Jill Schwartz, and the good thing about that, students have an opportunity to work on cultivating kinesthetic learning, heightening that sensory awareness, which is important for students that young, integrating social, physical, and cognitive growth. They had an opportunity to reinforce dance as a cultural expression, and certainly negotiating listening and peaceful communication techniques. So they spent three days, each class either once or twice a day, on all three of those days, had an opportunity to work with Jill and the beginning of her. So happy to report about that. Some things that are coming up, we have our annual Project Aces event on the afternoon of May 1st, actually a nice little break at the end of the day, on the first day of our math assessment for three, four, five. And Aces, if you don't remember, is all children exercising simultaneously, and we've been doing it every year since Kevin and Nell got here. So we'll be doing it at 2:40, everybody goes out, staff, everyone, and does about fifteen minutes of exercise. And he was, he was on the roof, but bringing us to step back a couple of feet, and that's always been successful, so we'll keep doing that. Yeah, I was very worried, my principal had the first year, I was, and that was when we had the drone, and it was a whole, it went fine, but don't have to be worried. Kevin and Nell, that's another one. On Friday, the 26th, this coming Friday, Reindeck Bike to School Day, and it was just more of a kind of a grassroots thing, not necessarily school-affiliated, but Chantel Collins, I wanted to thank her, and her parent, Liz Mazarella, for organizing, and basically students will ride their bikes to the mini park for a no-waste breakfast, and then at 8:30, a convoy to CLS with parent chaperones, of course. So looking forward to that. Engineers Week is back, it's coming this May. I just wanted to thank Lisa Heller and all the IBM engineers who have worked with our staff to keep this initiative moving. As you may know, Barb Rizzolo did that for a very long time and helped organize, as a result, and her husband, who was a Rick, was at IBM. So Lisa's kind of picked up and kind of worked on my grade-level chairs to make that happen. So we'll be doing that, working on a variety of hands-on activities, so stay tuned for an update on when and what those activities will be. And then our annual spring concerts, grade four is May 13th, grade five is Mason's.
Do you have a question? Could you talk a little bit about how the state tests went? I know our opt-out numbers were better, but they're still high. I'm wondering if you have any sense of, you know, why people are still opting out, or about the process?
Why? I mean, I do hear a lot about student angst for taking the tests. I got, and I know a little bit more this year, I think, because, you know, we've gotten better at communicating, and, you know, the district had put something out to parents kind of saying, hey, listen, this is kind of what it means in school. So I got a little more reason, you know, I had a couple people, I'm sorry to write this note after seeing the letter from you and your family, but, you know. So in a lot of cases, it's angst, students angst about the test. I'm sure there's a couple of parents where it is a bit of, still a political decision, a bit of a protest, I guess, but in most cases, I find that they're responding as a result of their student, you know, just, they don't want to have to put their child through that. You know, some students with anxiety disorders and things, it just really isn't. So those are primarily the reasons. You know, our numbers were much lower, which was great. I apologize, I shouldn't have wrote the sheet. I know we had a bit of a bubble in one grade, it may have been the third, actually, this year. year. One of the things we still struggle with is the logistics of no timing on the test, which I think ultimately is the best decision. Glad the state made it. I'd asked for 20 years, why they give them 45 minutes to take a multiple choice test and not two hours. So what we are seeing is the kids who historically, who historically haven't had the time to finish the assessment, have the time to do it. The issue is more logistics and giving them time, like, you know, for example, it's kind of tough when, and we do some schedule shifts as well, obviously, to give them more time and start in the mornings, it creates a more complicated special source of information. We shift that. I also try to play with the lunchtime so that they get as much time in the morning, but certainly it's impossible to get, you know. We had one student taking the test almost all day. This ELA was different. Last year was much, we had a lot more students in the carryover room, you know, the place where, you know, after, let's say, an hour and a half, unless a teacher has two or three kids, you know, they might go down, they give them more breaks, send them to a separate space and then they finish it. We had less of that, but we still have kids needing to kind of literally take the break, have lunch. You know, it's one of those things where, you know, you have to debate, you know, obviously them sitting down taking an assessment while their carryover is right outside the window having recess is a big, so we try to obviously give them that time, then they come back. So it's more of a break, we hold on to the assessments and then they go and do it. So it's kind of tough, otherwise you'd have kids sitting for six hours straight and I don't think that's acceptable either. So it's not, we don't have huge numbers, but that's one of the bigger issues I've seen with assessments, kids that are just trying real hard and they're super diligent and they're, they're working most of the day to get that assessment finished. So we try to agree with this.
Thank you.
I have a couple. You mentioned the Cahill grant when you were telling us about the STEM lab. I know you and Mr. Wolfen have been putting together your wish list. Can you tell us a little bit about how that process is going? I know it took a long time at the high school, but...
Well, we actually submitted it the Friday before the deadline, so we were able to get that to them. It was a couple of weeks back. We got a response that they did get it, so I guess they're in the process of looking through it. Primarily what we were looking at, David was at the point where he was hoping, you know, when we firstly, first envisioned that space, because it's K5, you have, you know, kids from this big to almost my height, almost. And basically, we wanted like adjustable tables. And really now that, you know, STEM also in those types of labs have become something, you know, manufacturers have met demands. So he was able to find some tables that really I think met his needs more than what we're currently using, which are kind of computer tables and you kind of lift them up and down. So he wanted, and the casters are starting to get a little, so that was one of them. And then upgrading the tablets that are in the class as well. I think it's basically, it is tablet driven, there's a lot of, you know, opportunity for students to use that and collaborate using the tablets, design, things like that. And he's finding some of the apps, you know, we kind of need upgrades and things like that. So he did, he did put in for the tables and a new set of laptops with the warranty that would allow any action to be purchased. So those are some things.
My other question is about any feedback you may have received from the community about slowly moving the kindergarten start age back.
It's been very minimal, actually. I have had a couple of parents with November birthdays, you know, ask about, you know, they know we have flexibility, so I've had a couple reach out to me and we discuss, you know, what to do, where to go. You know, historically, if they're interested, you know, this year because we have the flexibility, I do recommend that they come and do the dial screening and then we can talk to them about readiness and things like that. Yeah, I have one parent that I have to talk to, that I'm in talks with, that is, that's a little disappointed. Her daughter's, her daughter's like December 3rd or something like that and feels like she's ready. That would have missed a cutoff anyway, if that stayed the same. So I was just kind of talking to her about, you know, options, you know, for us, we don't have that much flexibility. And then also, by the way, so, but she understands and it's really been a positive response. I also, I've had probably more conversations with Taurus, people who are coming who might have a kid in another year and I'm always like mentioning, you know, when is their birthday, this is what we're doing. In almost every case, it's like, oh, I'm so glad you guys decided to do that, oh, that makes so much sense. So I really haven't had any negative luckily, except for the one, and the one parent was more of a conversation, wasn't really negative, but she was kind of decided that her daughter was super ready. But there's a lot of concern as well. So it's been, it's been positive, but very minimal and like five families maybe reached out. It was a good choice, a good decision. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
Small bump of ELA testing to the top of the list, I don't want to talk about better things. So as you know, as Brett talked about, the ELA assessments were administered in early, early April. You know, I was always in this building with the cooperation of Dr. Deb Gordon, high school teachers. You know, I'm pleased to say, I think the logistics of the administration administering the exams this year was really one of the smoothest that I can recall in several years. I was, I was touted as a hero by my, by my staff for refusing to pilot the computer-based testing when they, when they heard that the system crashed and everything was postponed about K2. Just looking at some numbers and to speak to your question, Diane. First, from a test refusal standpoint, our numbers were down significantly this year as well. They were still high at the sixth grade level, which I found unusual, although I know that particularly cohort of students coming through Brett's building always seemed to be high. And, you know, I thought it was, I was relatively encouraged by the fact that it dipped substantially down into the eighth grade, particularly in the conversations that I'm having with parents at the eighth grade level. I just don't understand this idea that you're not going to have your child sit for a standardized test at the eighth grade level when Regents exams are right around the corner and there's so much riding on those exams. So this idea that, you know, I'm not going to, you know, allow you to test my child in eighth grade because it creates anxiety for them, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. And for the first year this year, I saw a real dip at the eighth grade level. I think our refusal rate in eighth grade were 5.6%. A colleague from Weebutup reached out to me at that age and said his eighth grade refusal rate was 52. So again, you know, obviously the importance with its, you know, relation to ESSA and the fact that we're tracking these numbers, but our overall refusal rate was at 8.9% this year, which is down from 17.2 in 2018, even 24% in 2017. And totally regarding the tests themselves, and this was the second year that the assessments were reduced from three days of testing to two. Again, I, that was certainly a positive and, you know, on its face, makes it appear as if the task demands on students are, you know, are lesser, you know, you're reducing the number of days they're tested by third. However, in polling my ELA teachers, particularly at the sixth, sixth grade level, but I think the seventh and eighth grade ELA teachers felt the same, they still felt that the task demands, particularly on day two, were pretty substantial and not necessarily developmentally appropriate. As Brett pointed out, we also had, you know, quite a number of students who went well beyond the initial 90 minutes that were granted to everyone. As a matter of fact, on day two, there were so many students that hadn't completed the exam and the allotted time that we had to extend the testing time for all students by another 20 minutes. And then following that time, we had, so testing took place in this building, you know, first and second period. We had an additional 35 students that tested longer than that. We had 18 students that finished before the end of period three, 10 more students who finished before the end of period four, five more before the end of period five, and two students that finished midway through period six, almost four hours of testing straight. You know, I had one student that he just reduced to tears and Mrs. Fountain and I finally closed it before I had been sent back to class and said, you know, he had worked very hard and he was done. Again, state assessments and math are coming up next week. State assessments and, you know, all the forms of written assessments and science for eighth grade students are coming up later, later next month and we'll see how those goes. You know, too, did we ELA, particularly that second day of the writing is the most difficult for all students. I don't know if anybody has any questions about testing.
So when you mentioned that the teachers and yourself were feeling that it wasn't, that the test wasn't developmentally appropriate for the students, is that true that is what you were saying?
The task demands were, you know, again, I'm relying on, I'm relying on my grade level experts for that information. But based on their, you know, year one delivery of the curriculum and their, you know, integral of the standards, they didn't feel that the test was designed well in some places. And in other places, the passages they felt were appropriate, questions and the way they, you know, questioned development they felt was appropriate, particularly on day two with some of the writing sections.
So is that, is the state open for this type of information? Do they seek, do they seek it out or is it, do you share it?
There was a survey that's conducted after state assessments are completed where, you know, professionals who feel are able to share their input and their, your guess is as good as mine as to what they do with that information or, you know, how, how much stock they put in that information. I haven't had an opportunity to meet with colleagues around the county. You know, I'd like to raise that question in my next little principal's meeting and just see how, you know, teachers at other districts felt about the exams. So we'll see. I mean, they do, they do, again, they ask for that information, where that goes, how it's used, how it's changed, you know, how it changes the making of the test year in here, basically. A lot of other things. Since my last report in the middle school, we've held two of our more popular annual events for students. The first we held was in late March, was our kind of annual Top Shot competition. And I wanted to mention that because it's always a well-attended event, you know, once against our students culinary talents, we're judged by local chefs here in town, as well as neighboring towns, as well as faculty members and parent members and culinary graduates. But this year's competition was especially satisfying because we hit a 10-year high in both number of entries, which I think was 39, and number of participants, which was 55. So it's a, it's a program that's expanding and there was a lot of energy that evening and it was a long time. We look to continue that next year. Next up, and it was held that same week, so lots of planning in a very short period of time, but we held Artist in Action Day, as I know I've recorded out here before. In recent years, it's been tough to, to, you know, pull together a pool of presenters. But fortunately, we were able to welcome 19 parenting community members who came to present to our students. I know when I mentioned this in my last report, we had yet to secure a keynote speaker. And the gentleman who joined us did a phenomenal job, was a gentleman by the name of Louis Kelly, who is a local traveler, local travel and outdoor slash adventure photographer. He's been all over the world, photography is amazing. But really his message to students was about, you know, passion for photography, how it's, how it's changed his life, goal setting and all those things that were much more broad. He applied that to a much more broad scope for students. Did such a good job, and I think this was the third time he's ever presented to a group of students, that I'm going to take some of his key points and reshare those ideas with my graders and my, my moving upstairs. Following his address, students cycled through several presentations and again, we always span a very wide variety. We had landscape architecture, we have ballet, we have ceramics, photography, graphic design, creative arts therapy, among a number of other presenters. Going back to state testing, again, our continued SEL work with our students. Prior to state testing, Mrs. Rodier again worked with our sixth grade students as we looked to, you know, continue to try to build resiliency in our students and address their social emotional needs. So she ended up in a number of lessons with the sixth graders focusing on the skills of focus and of stress reduction and mindfulness, again, in order to try and reduce that anxiety in our, in our sixth grade students. And that's really work that we're looking to expand even further. As you recall, we're also working with Alice Coleman, who was a fearless living coach, and we're looking, we've been in some conversation with her about expanding her work next year as well, as well as what Mrs. Rodier has been doing with our students. Earlier this month, members of our peer leadership club worked with fourth grade classes at CLS, and they were teaching them about the takeover of Netherlands by the English as part of their Dutch history unit, very ambitious group of students, primarily sixth grade students, but a number of seventh and eighth graders as well. They, they now work with every grade level of one and they apply on state at that grade level and doing that every year. Prior to spring break, thanks to an RSF grant in collaboration with NTS, seventh grade students participated in a week-long art movement project during which they're learning about anatomy and skeletal systems. Through their own movement, students are observed, their skeletal, observe their skeletal structure, the collaborative work of muscles and joints and how movement evolves into shape and function. They worked with artists, Mimi Remeski, Martha Devias, Pat Sexton, and created life-size sculptures of the skeletal systems using recycled newspaper. And as I saw Pat walk by, please stop up, I know that she was putting together a pretty incredible display in the mosaic foyer upstairs of the student org. I'm not sure if it'll be done tonight, but certainly the next couple of days. Some upcoming events, this Thursday, BMS will hold an spring concert. You recall that we piloted a combined chorus and band concert for the first time in my tenure here in the winter. It was a phenomenal success, so we're going to continue that in the spring. Who's joining us? The 13th Annual Rhinebeck Central School District Art Show titled Just Imagine is opening shortly and will be at the Starlight Library on display throughout the month of May. Of course, that includes work from all three buildings. Art students K12 will begin with an open reception on Friday, May 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30. On May 9th, the seventh grade band will travel to New York City to attend a production of Phantom of the Opera. On May 29th, the eighth grade band will be traveling to New York City to attend a production of Stomp. And finally, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Pritchman and the seventh grade team, extensive financial support from Rhinebeck Science Foundation, the PTSO, Teaching Hudson Valley, Arts and Education and the LON and Historic Site, seventh grade students will take part in a four-day field trip series tying hands-on activities to the curriculum, the major academic areas of math, science, social studies, industrial technology. That will take place from Monday, May 20th to Thursday, May 3rd. And I look forward to sharing out details of those activities tomorrow.
Questions for Mr. Evans?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a drink of spring break. I'm going to start, as I usually do, with some updates from the BLPT. The building level planning team has finalized plans for a community reading. We will invite our students to read the first volume of the series called March by Congressman John Lewis. This is a highly acclaimed graphic novel on the civil rights movement. We're in the midst of planning supporting activities that will take place over the summer and a culminating event, which will take place once the vote is in September. In addition, we are planning another day of service that will take place on day 11 at the high school campus from work in memory garden. And we're also planning for a summer day of service, hopefully to take place in August. In our science department, we'll be sending a team of students under the supervision of Ms. Christie to the Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit, which will take place at the Shulke Center in Olive Bridge. This program, which is going to take place in February, is designed to bring small teams of local, urban, international students in high school, college for a three-day immersion in climate in climate literacy education. Students will be building their leadership and ecological stewardship skills. In our music department, right before spring break, our band and chorus typically combine field trip to see Phantom of the Opera. In my time here, this is the first time that we have had a combined band and chorus field trip. And as Mr. Kennedy also reported, we're going to have another, in high school, another combined concert on May second, band and chorus. If you weren't able to attend our, our fall concert, I certainly quite do allow us. It's really quite an experience, quite a spectacle. In our guidance department, we'll be administering the S A Ts locally here at Brannec on May fourth. A P exams will be administered from May sixth through seventeenth. One hundred and nine students will be taking two hundred and two advanced placement exams. I'm happy to report that two of our career technical institute students at the Regional Skills USA competition were captured with top honors on our junior compikers for first place in the carpenters assistant competition and our senior variant colostros for second place in the job interview competition. They'll be moving on for the statewide competition, Skills USA in Syracuse in several weeks. In the co-curricular realm, tomorrow night, our environmental club is sponsoring in our art forum, a lecture by local environmentalist, Doren Short. Doren will be talking about introduction to sustainability. This program, this design helps students better understand what sustainability means and how to implement that principle in their daily lives. Our Gay Straight Alliance will be sponsoring the day of silence tomorrow. Typically, as you may be aware, the day of silence takes place on April twentieth. We were in session, so we're going to observe the day of silence tomorrow. Our newspaper has its sixth edition of American Reality now available online. I'd like to take a moment too and congratulate our cast, crew musicians, and advisors, our school musical, little shop performers for their production. In student council news, our student council officers and our class officers have completed their work with David Lee, who you recall is the director of the Teaching Empathy Institute. He worked with our class of leaders to develop their peer leadership skills and their planning skills. Our class officers and our students in student council are in the process of ironing out the details of their proposed school-wide community building event. And I look forward to reporting to you on this event, either right before it occurs or maybe after it occurs. In addition, several months ago, our student council invited Congressman Antonio Delgado to speak at our school to our students regarding his job as congressman. Congressman Delgado has accepted this invitation and we're planning for him to visit us on May twenty-ninth. So at this point, the student council is in consultation with our advisor, communicating with Congressman Delgado's office regarding this visit and this presentation. Our Model U N club will be traveling to Dalton School this weekend for another Model U N tournament. In addition, as you're aware, but I'll, I'll share again, once again, our Model U N has been invited to send fifteen students to the annual World Summit of Nobel Peace Laureates, which will take place in Marita, Mexico in September. The Model U N club has publicized its application materials and will review their applications beginning of May seventeenth. Looking ahead, for repetition's sake, I've already mentioned that May second will be the combined, a combined band and chorus concert, and on May fourth, we'll be administering our S A Ts.
Questions?
Will you remind us about Congressman Delgado's experience at your next presentation to us? Because I think probably some of us would like to attend that too.
What, what's the date of that again?
Currently, we're looking at May twenty-ninth. And Congressman's office has indicated that he has bailed, probably starting about nine fifteen, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. We're in the activity period schedule, probably we're in periods one and two, are out for assembly presentation and activities. Absolutely. Joe.
I'm wondering about the A P exams. Are there, with the cost shifting to parents this year, were there any students that are not taking the exam because of cost that you're aware of or?
You know, there, off the top of my head, probably seven, six or seven students who opted not to take A P exams. I'm not aware of, I can speculate in terms of any other reason why.
Is that typical from, I mean, is that, does that happen every year? We have a handful of students that don't take the test?
Previously, you know, if we, if we have students who did not take an A P exam, I could count that on quarters of a finger. So that's, that is a previous experience. But, you know, all things considered, that is what happens.
Got it. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Environmental hygiene report.
Okay. So this, this was formerly known as the fire inspection report. Well, we did, our friend at State Education Department gave it a fancier name. I, I will apologize a bit for the format. I don't find it particularly user-friendly, but again, we thank our friends at S E D for that.
It's your own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, you'll, you'll note if you start on part two A, which is, I put third page in, actually go to the fourth page. At the top, we'll see Chancellor Livingston. So there was one, two, three, four, non-conformances, the chancellor. And if you keep going through to the storage garage, there, well, I missed the section there. I'm sorry, I did miss a section. The high school had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and the elementary school had one, two, three, four, and the storage garage. I don't believe they had any. The, they've all been, they've all been corrected, so we will be able to get our certificate of occupancy, which the old one expires mid-first, that's good to know, and that won't be a problem. Everything's been taken care of. I will share with you that the, the majority of non-conformances were in the areas of, how did I say this?
Extension cords?
No. We actually, I don't think we had any daisy chaining and extension cords this year. So we finally had a breakthrough on that one. And the other thing I would want you to know is that we did not purposely, we did not announce when the fire, when the hygiene inspection was going to be because we wanted to see how things come out in the real world and not just when we give them a heads up, hey, they're coming in tomorrow so they fix all these non-conformances. So no, daisy chaining and extension cords weren't an issue this year. What was a fairly, relatively frequent issue was fire escape windows blocked with storage, you know, boxes of books and various and some of the other stuff. Every, you see that one over there where it says rescue window? That is designated fire escape window. And if that were your classroom and you had a bunch of stuff piled up in front of it, that's a violation because in the event of an emergency, that could make it difficult for people to get out of the window. And that occurred in, in both buildings, to be, to be fair. There is also seems to have been a, which I, I find it rather ironic actually, but a proliferation of folks, not everybody, certainly nothing here was everybody, but a proliferation of people propping doors open with little wedges of wood and putting magnets over the, the, the place on the door frame where the little thing from the lock goes in. Some entrepreneur at some point made a lot of money with selling these little, like the kind of magnets that you might, the material for a magnet that you might put on the back of your car, only it's a, you know, a rectangle and it very neatly covers the, where the door striker goes in. So you can, you know, kids can come and go without the inconvenience of having to have somebody open the door for them. Obviously, the idea for safety in this, in this age of Parkland and Columbine and you count them up yourself, is that those doors stay locked. It's inconvenient, but God forbid there's somebody who wants to come in that you don't want to come in, that they cannot easily just walk into your room because the door has been jammed open or the striker has been covered with a, with a rubbery magnet. Interestingly enough, I'm, I'm assuming this proliferation was not limited to, to the Rhinebeck Central School District because about three weeks or so after our inspection, and I'm not sure if, if, if every school in the state had the same inspection month or whether.
Oh, no, it varies.
They mix it up.
Yeah.
But State Education Department came out with a rather strongly worded missive about pointing out to school, all school districts, that using a magnet over your door and propping a door open is strictly against the code. So again, they didn't do that just for Rhinebeck State, so I'm assuming a lot of districts are having the same problem. So those are problems in terms of school safety more than fire safety. Obviously, the rescue window blockages are unissue for all kinds of safety, but maybe more so with, with the fire, a need to, to escape due to a fire or whatever. So there were a few other relatively, relatively minor non-conformances. And it almost always happens, I, I'm not sure how many of these exit lights we have or every school district has around every building, and the day the fire inspector comes, one of the bulbs happens to be burned out. So that's a non-conformance. They're right up. I guess we should be spending most of our time checking those lights, you know, on a daily basis, but it's not practical. So, you know, within three minutes of after the inspector leaves, Sheldon's guys have already had the, the bulb replaced. So it's now, it's a conformance. Trying to think what the other, oh, one of the, one of the non-conformances was with a fire extinguisher that they have, fire extinguishers have to be by, by law, code, whatever, they have to be inspected each year and certified as, you know, properly, working properly. So apparently during the, during the inspection, one of the, one of the, the rooms or spaces, I gotta choose the word space instead of room, one of the spaces where there was a fire extinguisher sitting, the fire extinguisher had not been inspected since last year. So that's a non-conformance as it should be. Interestingly, that location for the fire extinguisher was, was not a required location for a fire extinguisher, which is why the inspectors didn't catch it when they came through our building whenever they do that on, you know, they, they come around, just go through every space. They didn't even notice it there because wherever the there was, I don't, I can't tell you exactly, but it's, was not required to have a fire extinguisher there. They didn't inspect it. So I said to Sheldon, so how did you meet the non-conformances? They just took it out of there. The bulb on there in the first place, so it's gone. So non-conformance has been, has been addressed. So I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm not making light of any of those things because most of them are serious enough that they should have been written up, especially in terms of blocked escape windows and, and such. But again, we, we give it a shot with nobody, we, and we only tell the building principals ahead of time that there's going to be an inspection. So it is what it is and for better or for worse, that's how we learn. It's just the same rationale for when you do a lockdown drill or a fire, you know, an exit drill or whatever. That, that's how you learn. Yeah, we try, I, I think I mentioned to some of you, maybe all of you, that we did a lockdown drill a couple of weeks ago and the, the automatic little robot voice saying, lockdown, 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 didn't work. Should have worked, didn't work. So unfortunately, it wasn't the real deal, that goodness. I mean, we had a human being make the, the announcement, but that person should have been huddled under a desk someplace instead of making an announcement. So we had the guys come back in and they spent, they're a part of a, of a day here on a Saturday, I think. It was a programming issue. So we're going to do another one of those soon without prior warning and we'll see if that, if that works. And that's our, our goal is to have everything work when we're not expecting it to, to work. So anyway, this is not for your approval. It's, we have to, we have to publish a public notice that lets members of the public know that if they want to inspect the report, they can, and I don't like doing that before the board has a chance to look at the, at the report. So you have, we will, we'll get our certificate of occupancy by, by May first. So you, you've done your due, your due diligence with this inspection.
Just, I, you know, obviously, all these things are not the majority, they're, they're the minority. It's just a few things.
Yes, yes.
But, you know, we've had a lot of staff members talk to us this year about security, so it's a little disheartening that, you know, we're getting a little lax in some of these areas. I mean, you know, until bad things stop happening in schools or anywhere else, then we can't be lax about those things. And we wouldn't want something to happen here because we left a door open. You know, and I can imagine it's completely annoying, you know, ten, fifteen times to have to open that door, but, you know, we really can't let that happen. We have to, security has to be important. It's been important to our staff. Like I said, they've talked to us a lot about that this year, so.
I, I couldn't agree with that statement more. And I would also, as I think I made the point, it's, it's not, it's not just our staff. Obviously, these things are happening. For them, for S E D to issue a bulletin to every school in the state, it's got to be happening. But it's, it, there is an irony there. I mean, we should be concerned about safety. We should probably be concerned more about safety now than we were twenty years ago, but we're doing different things now to, to, you know, to subvert keeping ourselves and our kids safe. So that, that's a problem and we'll keep reminding our staff of that and I hope it's only for drill that we have to.
Absolutely.
Have to make that count. But I, I couldn't agree more with, with what you just said. I mean, and there are other things that, that I know still happen that don't always necessarily get picked up by, you know, this once-a-year inspection. You know, people who prop, prop an outside door open so they don't have to walk around to the front door to gain access. You know, I mean, the odds of something terrible happening as a result of that are probably, probably small, but it only takes one situation where somebody can gain access to the building at, at a far end of the building where nobody's sitting there watching because somebody put a pebble in the door so they can run out to their car. And I, I find that, that many of those things are related to a matter of convenience. It's too inconvenient to get up and open the door because Johnny just came back from the restroom. It's too convenient to walk to the front door. It's too convenient to walk to the front door to come in, we just wanna run out to our car and grab something and, and scoop back in. It's gonna be cold comfort if we have a real crisis on our hands here. Majority of teachers are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
But again, it's only, it's that one weak link, that's, that's always the concern.
And don't, but don't the badges swipe them into any outside door, or is it only the front door?
They have to have the optical reader, they have to have the reader on it?
Yeah, not every door has a reader. I mean, the, the main doors do, but there's plenty of doors that, that don't, that really don't need it.
Correct.
So.
And is there, in regards to propping doors open, things like that?
Yeah.
Is there, you know, an orientation for the teachers or something where they're reminded, or the whole, all the staff is reminded, like, you know, don't prop the doors open, take the long route, get exercise?
Well, I, I made a decision that I, I thought I would never have to make, but I feel like I do, and, and I have decided to, to address these issues on the first day back in, in September.
Yeah.
Because I, I think everybody needs to hear it from some, it's embarrassing for you to say it, but you know, from some higher authority. I know the building principals go through this stuff, and it's common sense, most of it, but I'm gonna take a couple of minutes at least to say, hey, guys, you know, we're all concerned about our own safety, the safety of our children, and doing this stuff, propping doors, using magnets. It's making for a less safe school environment for all of us, and it really has to stop. And whether that had any significant effect or not, I don't know, but I feel like I have to say it. But they get, they get the message from their, from their-
From their guys.
Anyway. That's all I have, that's all I have to say about that.
All right. Is Rob, you're up with-
Yes, you are.
Communication. It was a day of editing, what we did. We looked at the budget one-on-one document, and we completely went through the entire document, doing some editing. Steve is gonna make the changes, and then at our next meeting, we're gonna read through it again and see if there's any fine tuning. The budget brochure that Steve and Joe have been working on, the content, and Tom has the budget numbers to add to it, so that's off to the printers on May 1st. And our next meeting is on May 1st. Any questions?
Are we still on track for the May 1st deadline for the budget?
Should be.
Are you going to share the letter from the board if you break for us?
No. Of course, yes, of course.
Okay. That would be wonderful, thank you. All right. So, good news. Anybody?
We've heard a lot of great news, we always do, from our principals. The Environmental Club from Chancellor are little rock stars, as far as I'm concerned, I think. They've done a really remarkable job, and I hope that, that program continues up into the secondary level, too. So our environmental club here is also fabulous, but-
The one thing I would just kind of spin off that, and it's, it's less good news than, than a question, I think I know the answer to it, but you'll tell me. So we've had three presentations, one from each building. They've all been a little different, some have involved the children who are actively engaged in another activity, some have involved, you know, older kids who are mentoring younger kids. But I mean, it's, I think it's all been good, but it does take your time. So this, this was kind of our experiment this year to kind of see how that went, so I'd appreciate feedback in terms of looking towards next year. Do we wanna keep doing this? Do we wanna do it more frequently? Do we wanna try to do one per semester from each building? And we did three this year. You don't have to give me an answer now, but it's something that I'll need to know before we start the school year, so we can get ahead of that curve. And regardless of what kind of schedule you would like these presentations on, I wanna be able to plan them properly with the, with the building principals. So let me know one of these days.
I have no say next year, but I think they should continue-
You have an opinion.
Yes, I do. I think they're great, and I, I think it's really important for the board to hear from the people in the building, and, you know, once a semester from each building, my opinion would be great. Steve?
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be wonderful to get more of that. On the other side, too, is, is being invited into the classroom like Justin Randall does with his, his classes. And also, I would have loved to have seen the anatomy project in, in work, so if you can encourage some invitations for us to go in to see more of that, that would be great as well.
Yeah.
I love them. And I, you know, you could have more of them, that'd be fine with me. I think it's great for the kids to come in, to hear what they're doing. You know, I hope people at home get to see what's going on. You know, and I think it's good for the kids to come and present, I mean, that opportunity, it's difficult to do that. I mean, that, just on a smaller note, I think that helps them as well.
Lisa?
Right, and although I'm also, I'm going to be on the board next year, one thing that I noticed tonight, which I also remember from the previous presentations, is that parents came to see their kids give their presentations, and not only is that great, but it's also nice to have them actually be at a board meeting and hear a little bit about what we do also, bring them more into the operation of the student's program.
Jacqueline?
I would be happy to have an increase, to have one from each building, each semester. I think it is time well spent.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback. A comment? Had an increment?
You're so cute. That's my problem.
Just what I asked, yes, that is why we're here, ask about some of that. Okay. Thank you.
Any old business, Lisa?
I just wanted to know what was happening with that, that session we were talking about having, you know, outside of board meeting time about the report that we've been giving, you know?
CAC report.
Yeah. Where we, where was some discussion about scheduling such a session, I don't know where that's at.
Yeah, we, we should pick that up as a CAC when we meet next. I mean, as most of you know, we've been meeting about every two weeks, so we, we should calendar what that'll look like and when we'll, when we'll do it. But yeah, it's just been one of a gazillion things going on, and that's not, that's not a reason or excuse, but I'll sort it back up again.
Can I just ask, sort of rough poll, are there nights that absolutely can't be scheduled for anyone?
Didn't we say the opposite week of the board meeting, like a, did we, did we settle on that, or did we just mention like a possibility?
I just mentioned it, I'm, I'm not sure we had any consensus one way or the other, but.
Okay. All right, so we'll look at that.
Only thing, I'm, I'm out of town the week of May 25th.
Well, before I'd schedule anything, I'd ask, and if people could make it, we'd put it out there.
I also wanna remind you all of that, I, I am off the board after the vote, after the budget vote. So if we're gonna have this session and you want to participate, it's gonna be, if you don't care, that's okay.
Of course we care.
That gives us the next two Tuesdays, if we're going on Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll put three asterisks next to that one.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have an opportunity to help with that. Okay. Thank you for coming. Any other?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Definitely, no, Mark, yeah.
I'll just report that prior to the break, I went to the meeting of Senator Serino's education advisory report, which Johnny sent us on, and I'll just report that the Senator is very interested in any issues that may have, school districts may have had with state testing. I reported to her that, I had not heard any at that point, but the election office will report some of their concerns.
Yeah.
I also reported to her about the, the new law about providing three hours for voting to our employees, and she didn't say that she was willing to look into doing anything about it, but they're gonna take that into their advisement and see what they can do.
I, I would just add that the, and some of you, some of you may have read it because you read the same stuff from this, but that, that I don't share, I don't have, I don't get it, it's a bit confidential or anything. But you may have read that there's been a clarification on the voting thing. Apparently, it does not apply to school votes.
Yeah.
It's municipal votes and national votes, it's not.
Buys you a little time.
What's that?
Buys you a little time.
Well, yeah, I'll take it, I'll take it where I'm right and get it, but obviously, there, there's still a lot they need to do to, to make that piece of legislation make any sense whatsoever.
So no more guidance as far as how it works or whatever?
No, no, no. I think everybody's like, they're just still shaking their heads, what were they thinking?
What were they thinking?
The other thing I, I just wanted to mention, I won't name any names, but in case you hadn't heard, our esteemed reporter from the Kipsey Journal, School of Education and Masterors.
I did hear that. So. Kipsey Journal, I know we had a reporter from Kipsey Journal.
She's not shown up here.
Oh, okay.
But she does, she is the education reporter. The, what's the word?
Take it careful.
Yeah, I was gonna use, oh, I was gonna use a bad word.
Investigative journalist.
Investigative journalist, that's it. So she's getting investigative journalism prepared.
All right. Any other other? Okay. All right, and we are moving on to action items. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Just point that, just take out to your comments.
Yes, I would like to point out item 6.1.9. This is a grant awarded by the Science Foundation supporting the dirt, the secret life of soil for Chancellor's second grade.
Can I suggest this?
Yes.
So I can give you the date?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. And we would like to pull out item 6.1.10 for discussion. Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just wanted to thank the R S F, as always. Thanks, absolutely. Thanks to the R S F. And I also like to point out, we just got at our tables tonight, thanks to Stacy Stoltzer for donating a treat for us, so that's very generous. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the 6.1 content? That is unanimous, that motion passes.
Do we vote on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I hadn't put a date down there because I wanted to meet with our administrative team, and we met earlier today, we haven't met for a couple of weeks because of that, the vacation time and whatnot. And as, as you may well imagine, there's a lot going on this time of year between state assessments and concerts and a gazillion other things. So I floated with them the idea of taking Tuesday, May 28th as the final give back day, have one more, I think, weather-wise, as well as having May 5th, May 5th, no, May, no, the 3rd that we have off, Friday the 3rd. And that's been on the calendars, a day off since last March. And in terms of a backup, I've had, we had a, had snowstorm tomorrow, I can always pull that back, or I'm not, I'm not saying that in any kind of foolish way. So I, a bunch of other dates that I floated conflicted with things that are already on the calendar, you know, I was, I was going right for Thursday the 23rd, but that's special friends' day, so I don't dare deal with that. So the only downside possibly is that's when we're supposed to have our second May Board of Education meeting, which is not to say we can't meet that night. We meet in the summertime all the time when there are staff here to, to open and close. I'm just making everybody aware of the fact that if we take that day as a vacation, as a give back snow day, I would ask for your commitment to plan on meeting that night.
Are you all available to continue to meet that night?
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm actually not available, and, and I realized I was supposed to notify, I mean, I've known that for quite a while, so it was regardless.
Oh, that's the, you're away.
Yeah, that's the point.
Okay. All right. And I will be on board. And you will?
Well, we need at least a quarter.
Well, we'll have five.
Well, you'll have whoever gets voted into the new people.
My seat.
Assuming they are able to attend that.
Yes.
And it's not, and it's not Steve.
And it's not five.
Yeah, it's not Steve, because he'll be sitting here.
No, but he could be voted into her seat.
No, no, no.
No, I can't, they're on strike about it.
He's already on the board, he can't, he can't, he can't.
Doesn't it go by number of votes?
It's gonna be the highest vote, between the two, the other two, whoever's the highest vote getter.
The highest vote getter gets, gets appointed?
Of the other two.
Immediately?
Immediately.
It's not sooner.
I thought, because it goes until-
I thought they were set.
No, no, we looked at this last time, actually, it's because I'm filling out somebody else's term.
Right, but I don't think they-
Yep, correct.
No, I started this one, I filled out Rick Walker's term.
I remember that.
It doesn't make any sense. The year we were elected.
But why couldn't it be Steve?
Same situation, yep.
It's the lowest vote getter?
No.
The highest vote getter starts in May.
And it couldn't be Steve?
No, because he's already got a seat. You can't be in two seats. We will check with our legal counsel, just to make sure.
Lots of different candidates.
And have we told the other two candidates that this is the way this works?
I don't know anything about this.
Well, you weren't here, you're not here. Well, that, that, I mean, with, with all due candor, that doesn't mean they're compelled to do it.
True.
If they were not available, then we'd be down a person and we'd need four yes votes to get anything passed. But we'll, we'll double check this with our legal counsel, and then we'll tell the two of them, now that they've already put their petition in, so they're, they're on the ballot, we'll, we'll let them know how, how it works.
It might be slightly different after tonight.
It's true. Sorry, no take backs.
Yeah, right. You're official.
No take backs.
All right.
So that would be my recommendation, is that we take Tuesday the 28th as the final give back snow day, but that we plan on meeting that, that evening. We need at least four people there. That will also be the night that we will, as we do traditionally, do the, the tenure appointments for the year, so it's not an insignificant night, although if many of you told me you couldn't make it, I mean, it would not be the end of the world not to meet, but I suggest we meet if we can. Rest is up to you.
I think we just should, we should plow ahead.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to reschedule one unused emergency closing day as a school vacation day on Tuesday, May 28th?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to cast one vote for Ralph Tumento as a candidate in the 2019-20 annual election of members of the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Educational Services BOCs?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to cast one vote for Ralph Coats as a candidate in the 2019-20 annual election of members of the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Educational Services BOCs?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt a resolution to direct the district clerk to cast one vote to approve the Dutchess County BOCs? BOCs administrative budget in the amount of $4,656,822 for the 2019-20 school year.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? I have a question.
Lisa? So the board votes for the, the members of the BOCs board, but the clerk votes for the budget, the administrative budget?
That's correct.
She cast one vote for our board.
Right, I know, but we are voting, we're casting one vote for our board for this.
This is the warning that came right from our friends at BOCs, so.
But it's the same for the candidates because we're casting.
But it doesn't say the.
No, they say.
Direct the district clerk.
Anyway.
That was all.
Well, look, it's not on me. Well, I'm the one that's failing.
What does the motion for Ralph Cumento say on your ballot?
What's the motion?
Yeah.
Just a district clerk or other officer authorized to certify that the board resolution has been adopted shall complete the ballot by placing an expense to the name of the candidate for whom the vote has been cast and by completing the certification. Candidates are listed in health, medical, or other school district or residence. So it does ask to.
But it sounds like it would be the district clerk casting those votes.
Yes, too.
Yeah. It does sound like it. Okay. So all those.
Next to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request from Laura DeWitt, elementary teacher, with such leave to be taken as a combination of paid and unpaid leave under the family and medical leave act from September 3rd, 2019 through December 31st, 2019?
Some move.
Second.
Like to table?
Uh, we have a motion to table this. Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Six point five is tabled. Sorry. Yeah, not passed. All right. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of talking about.
Specific individuals, employment history of specific.
Employment history of specific individuals.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We're moving into executive session.